Good evening and welcome to the March 16th Business Meeting. Please stand. We are going to be led in the pledge by Mrs. Bork's first grade class.
Mrs. Bork's and Mrs. Bellino's first grade. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is the best and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
We did not follow them.
Each class is a slightly differentiated.
But it's lovely to see them.
It is.
Thank you, Mrs. Bork's class.
Maureen?
Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any listed agenda item. Does Jeremy get a comment?
Are you doing the reading first? Are you making a comment, Dr. Luft?
Nope.
So then I would like to start with the consent agenda, number one, please.
We've all approved the consent agenda items two through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the prior meeting's minutes, CSE/CPSE placements, approval of an amended 22-23 substitute listing, amending or approving additional hours for staff members, approval of unpaid time for staff members, 20-23-24 Board of Education meeting dates, we're approving additional spring coaches for the 22-23 athletic season, including a head coach for girls lacrosse, an assistant coach for varsity track and field, and a volunteer in the boys' lacrosse program. We're approving entering into a contract with Putnam County for real property tax services. We're approving an overnight trip for an athletic team, which is the girls' basketball team, which headed to Albany this morning for the New York State Championships. We're approving health and welfare contracts with Somers and White Plains, and we're appointing the Spring 20-23 Game Day Coordinator, which is J.D. Apostolico.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellino. I'd also like to mention that the Board of Education meeting dates, we looked at them, Mrs. Bellino and I looked at them. We tried to schedule two for every month. November and December only have one, but we have an opening for another one if we decide we need one. And all the rest of the months have two, except the summer. So we did increase them slightly this year.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolutions pass. Student representatives are not here? So maybe we can fill in if they're not all on Dr. -- they're not going to take his thunder. He's going to get to report on all the things that are happening in the district. Dr. Luft?
I'm gonna start off by stealing a little bit of Jackie's thunder, and then I'll turn it over to her real quick. So this past Friday, we held our superintendent's conference day. Just some highlights of the day, our high school, some of the topics they discussed for Regents, Core, or Advanced Regents, what exams we want to offer to which students, advanced diploma, graduation. Is there a way to rethink our graduation ceremony? It's been very similar since the school first opened. I know they didn't exercise where everyone sort of wrote down innovative things that they've seen at other graduations, things that maybe Putnam Valley wants to consider. Obviously, how we can continue to approve our diploma program as an IB World School at the high school as we prepare for our evaluation next year, and then department meetings. Our middle school had a consultant come in from California, and she led the IB Middle Years Program launch workshop. So the entire middle school faculty was involved in that process, going over the intricacies of the Middle Years Program, gathering additional information to use as really our launching off point for that work. Our elementary school had some more scholastic training. There was trainers coming in from scholastic education, and then they did other work around mindfulness and a book study, working in the innovation lab and reviewing some data. Other staff had an opportunity to attend Narcan training and safety training workshops. And our office professionals had team building and a communications workshop facilitated by a colleague from Bosse's. So while I shared all that, Ms. Levine did most of the work. So I'll turn it over to her to add anything that I forgot.
I think you covered just about everything, Dr. Luft, but it was a wonderful day of learning throughout our entire district, and all the members of our district were part of some level of learning, whether it was with a consultant about safety and shell training, or doing team building and communication, or writing really good curriculum. We had a lot going on that day, and it was a great time. We even had our administrators do a Ben Q training with Mike Lee leading the way. So Mike Lee and Alex Goffman. So thanks to them for leading a little lunch and learn for our administrative team as well.
Thank you. So a quick update for our middle school. I hope that everyone had an opportunity to see the musical The Lion King. Many of us here were able to see a sneak preview, a dress rehearsal earlier last week. I think it was the most impressive middle school musical I've seen, from the scenery to the wardrobe that was worn, as well as obviously the proficiency of acting displayed by students. They have two totally separate casts for each of the evenings, so they got as many students involved, and it was really a truly impressive performance, and a kudos to all those involved. Our elementary school held their annual science fair. It's always a huge pouring of support from parents. The auditorium is packed. Students have all their work on display. Many of those students partner with high school students that went down to support them as mentors, and it's always, it's a huge success. Some of the top presentations or top projects were selected and will actually be on display before a board meeting. I don't know if we have a date yet? April?
Sixteenth?
Thirteenth. So April 13th, those students for the project selected will be on display. We'll invite people a little earlier. They'll be right out here in the main hallway, and then we want to recognize those students, as well as some of their mentors who helped them along the way. Our high school has been doing their Seal of Literacy portfolio presentations, and many board members attend those, as well as cabinet members. It's very impressive to see students demonstrate proficiency in multiple languages. In fact, I remember last year, there was a seal of tri-literacy. One student demonstrated proficiency in three separate languages, as well as the Triumph Music Honor Society induction. I attended the New York State Council School Superintendent's Midwinter Conference in always sunny Albany, especially in the winter. Attended workshops on branding and marketing, student mental health crisis, and managing student discipline, as well as strategic planning. I got to hear from the New York State Superintendent of the Year. It's always a great opportunity to network with colleagues and to participate in your own professional learning. A quick athletics update. Our girls' basketball team is headed to Albany. They had their parade this morning, where they were led by members of the Putnam Valley Fire Department, put them through both the middle school and the high school, and then a drive-by with elementary school. I would think it was one of the cutest things I've heard, I've seen or heard. I just hear this sort of chanting and yelling outside, and there's 500 elementary school kids holding up signs. You can do it. Members of the team and the coaches got off the bus, like the Harlem Globetrotters, and the New York Knicks had showed up, signing autographs. It was truly a very special occasion, and it's amazing to see how excited our elementary school kids are to meet and greet our high school athletes. So we wish them the best. Their first game is tomorrow, state semifinals at 11:45 at Hudson Valley Community College. And then if they win tomorrow, then they play on Saturday evening for the state championship. Our cheerleading team went to states where they placed third, so a huge accomplishment for them. After winning a sectional title to finish third across New York State, this is extremely impressive. Gabe Rizwicki, a swimmer, he went to states, tied for second in the 50-yard freestyle, and was sixth overall on New York State in the 100-yard freestyle. We held a superintendent's council meeting, where our committee focused on consolidation of the district core values. Over the last almost year, we've done a tremendous amount of work of collecting insight from parents, community members, students, teachers across all three buildings, administrators, and have a large list of core values that were identified. And now our work is to consolidate those into what will ultimately be the core values of the Putnam Valley School District. We had a mediation session today with the teachers' union, so we're hopeful that a resolution will soon be had, and we continue to progress with the CSEA contract, which is up at the end of this year. We just held a budget Q and A listening hour upstairs prior to this meeting, as well as one at the middle school earlier in the week. We were happy to have several people come out and attend, and had pretty insightful conversations regarding what the proposed budget is, the budget-to-budget amounts, tax levy amounts. Library proposition was a big topic of conversation this evening, so I know we have a few representatives here from the library as well this evening, in case there's any public comment, and they can help address. But we continue to reiterate that the school budget and the library budget, although appear on the same piece of paper, are in no other way connected. The school gets none of the library's money. The library gets none of the school's money. It's just a mechanism in which the public can be allowed to decide on the appropriate funding for the town library. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to start with our presentations, and we'll start with the budget presentation. I think Jill will first.
Good evening again. So for those who are here often, this is our second run-through of our school budget presentation for this evening. Hopefully, it'll be slightly truncated compared to last week, to try to prevent severe boredom from those who are watching it for a second time. So as always, our school budget looks to balance or support the district's mission, vision, and goals. And it's well-known around Putnam Valley that our vision is child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future. And everything that's included within our budget and all our budget conversations, always try to keep the child at the center. I always forget about the little paper airplane. So some of our goals for this past year was the implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS. And the best way to think about this system, it's a whole-child approach to support. So not only are we looking to support children academically, but we're looking to support them emotionally, socially, in any way we can to ensure that they are successful here in school. Communication has been a goal of ours throughout the school year. We've increased opportunities for engagement. We've revitalized our building steering committees. We've started a district-wide advisory committee. We've held parent engagement evenings. We've held professional development sessions. Anything we can do in which we hope to further engage our community. Along professional development, many of our teachers, as well as our administrators, have helped facilitate workshops for their colleagues. So rather than having to pay to go an outside source or program, they're being able, they're being provided the opportunity to learn directly from their peers and colleagues here in district, where we know there's a high quality of instruction occurring. And we've implemented some innovative instructional programs. You spoke a little bit about the Middle Years Program at the middle school, which is still at sort of crossing the starting line, but a very successful diploma program, well underway at the high school, and a variety of new programs, including a scholastic reading program at our elementary school. This slide just gives a quick rundown of what our student enrollment is. We go into more detail. So our elementary school is currently at 549 students. The disclaimer here is we're still registering kindergarten students. So we currently have 75 kindergarten students registered. The number is a little low for us for this time of year, so if you know any kindergartners who may want to attend school here in Putnam Valley, send them on over. Just keep in mind, they also have to live here. But we expect that number to continue to grow. The trend that I like to point out on this slide is after many years of seeing an enrollment decline in our elementary school post-COVID, we're now beginning to see an increase in enrollment. So we went from 531 to 553, and when everything's said and done for the 23-24 school year, we'll have more than 553 students. So we'll continue to see growth at our elementary school, which is great after many years of decline. Our middle school will see a declining enrollment. The major factor there is a class of 125 students moved on to ninth grade, and a class of 81 students, which is an anomaly, came in for fifth grade. So that class of 81 is followed by a class of 132. So you'll see we'll quickly rebound back to -- oh, I went the wrong way, sorry. Oh, it is 132. 132 students. Well, this one happens to also be 132. So a class of 132 will be following that. So the middle school will quickly recover the students it lost this past year. And our high school enrollment, obviously, high school has had the largest classes, where we've graduated classes of 150 and 140 students recently, and taking in much smaller classes. But you'll notice the incoming class of 125 and the class before, 116, is a much more typical class size moving forward, and we'll see a stabilization there. The other disclaimer on this slide is the fact that we'll be welcoming six students from Garrison for the first time. So we've shared a lot of information about Garrison requesting Putnam Valley as an option for their K through eight school, where students are tuitioned out. Students have historically had the choice between Haldane and O'Neill, but members of the Garrison Board of Education got in contact with Putnam Valley, and they came for a tour and a presentation, and left impressed enough where they now signed a contract to offer Putnam Valley as a third school of choice for Garrison students. This slide just highlights some of the driving factors of our budget. 60% of our budget goes to cover contractual salaries and benefits. An additional 12% of our budget goes to cover healthcare. 21% of our budget goes towards vendor contracts and services. This includes all of our utilities, electricity, water, oil at the elementary school, as well as our transportation costs. Of these, one of the driving factors we've been faced with over the past eight-plus years is the cost of health insurance. So the dark blue columns represent actual costs, going back to 2015-16, when the district spent approximately $4 million on healthcare for all staff. This is not specific to any one unit or group. This is every employee for the Putnam Valley School District. I think an interesting trend is, leading up to COVID, we see a 30% increase as we go from $4 million to $5.2 million, even before COVID was a thing. 30%. Following COVID, we go to 5.5, 5.9, 5.9, and then eventually 6.6 this year. So approximately another 33% increase post-COVID. So a 66% increase over those eight years. Now, obviously, that comes at a significant expense to the school district, who carries a great deal of that cost. When we look at projections moving forward, those light blue columns, by simply taking the average increase for each of the first eight years, we project that out for the next 10 years, and you'll see that our health premiums of $6.6 million quickly escalate to over $13 million, approximately 104% increase in costs, just to cover our health insurance. So the red line represents retiree health costs. The green line represents active employee costs, and the pink line represents the trend line for what the actual costs are to the school district. So this is obviously something that the district needs to address. It's something where we're reaching the point where our annual increase in health benefits may soon exceed our increase in foundation aid, which means we're essentially starting in a deficit before the school year budget even begins. So certainly working hard to address what are escalating health costs. Obviously, our budget seeks to build bridges between our buildings, and some of the programs I had spoken about earlier are intended to do exactly that. Multi-tiered systems of support is something that's been initiated across the entire district. I spoke a little bit about our establishment of core values in the learner profile, setting common language and expectations across the entire school district. The Middle Years Program will help align our curriculum between the middle school and the high school, and obviously looking to improve our instructional practices to provide students with highly engaging and relevant instruction. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figarilla to talk a little bit about the budget.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm going to give you some of the numbers and how they break down. But first, I want to tell you that, you know, all of our budgets are estimates. They're based on analysis of prior year's period, and then over time, during the school year even, we reevaluate and decide, you know, where is that money used the best, and where do we need it? We hold departmental meetings to discuss the needs of the district before we even start this process. We prioritize what, you know, we're going to be using the funding on. We incorporate all kinds of projections to establish how feasible those, you know, requests are from the different departments, and why they need what they're asking for. And then we hold our public meetings, such as this, and such as the meetings we had before, earlier today, and on another day, and we will be holding other ones. I think our next one is March -- I'm sorry, Jeanie's not here. I have to look up the date. I'll get the date before the meeting is over. And we'll be having another PTA meeting as well. So to look at the revenues first, to meet those budgetary needs, we see our state aid is about 27% of our revenue, and that supports most of what comes from the non-local share. The local share is 73%, which consists of some interest in earnings, inter-fund transfers that we bring in from our other fund to support whatever we can with for capital project use. And then also, our local share consists of our taxes, our school taxes. This year, for the first time in 30 years, we will not be tapping into any of our reserves, except for the reserve we're bringing in from the debt service to pay for, to help pay for the roof, but no additional appropriated reserves to help meet the budgetary needs, because we have, and the foundation aid this year coming to us at a greater, it's been restored from the state over the last three years, so we have about 15% of our budget being covered by state aid. This button is sticking. Okay. So the expenditures that we need to cover with that money are our instructional expenses, and of course, our special education student population, those expenses coming through Bosse's and outside of school districts that support our students, student services, that should provide emotional support, and our guidance offices, and other therapeutic services, K to 12, our athletics and physical education department, transportation, which covers all our home-to-school runs, which is a hybrid system between our own expenditures and our contractor, our general support, which covers our district leadership, business office, district office expenses, administrative costs. And our benefits, Dr. Luft just spoke about those, the health costs and all of the other types of benefits, not just health insurance. We also have pensions, workers' compensation, social security, and payroll taxes to cover in those benefits. All of our central services, which is our maintenance and operations expenses for all of our facilities. So this is how the numbers break down. These are our appropriations. So this is what it costs us to run the district. We're seeing a budget-to-budget increase of 4.7%. As mentioned, we are bringing in some debt service money from our reserves that is specifically earmarked for the roof renovation at the high school. It's $1.5 million. Even though that money is brought into the budget as an expenditure, it is also brought in as a revenue, but from money that already exists within the school district reserves. So the budget-to-budget appears to be inflated to 4.7%, when in fact, 2.7% of that is the $1.5 million. So it kind of artificially inflates it, but I need to represent that in the expenditure portion of the budget in order to do the repairs that were necessary. So when in fact, the budget-to-budget would be 2.7% without that money, which already belongs to the district and has been, is not going back to the taxpayers to be raised again.
So just to clarify, if we decided not to move forward with the roofing project, that our budget-to-budget would change from 2.7 to 2%? And that 1.5, sorry, 4.7 to 2%, and that money allocated for the roof would go back into the reserves?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you want me to go through each of the percentages, but our instructional and student services is about $18.1 million of the budget. Special education services, 7.6%. Instructional media, 1 point -- I'm sorry, I can barely see that. 1.5%. I hope everybody else can see, and it's just me. Pupil services and athletics, $4 million, $4.1 million. Transportation, 3.5. Our general support area of the budget, 2.4. Central services, 2.8. Employee benefits, again, one of the largest portions of our budget, 13.3. And debt service and inter-fund transfers, which is the line that includes the $1.5 million that we're bringing in to do the roof repair, the 4.8 million. So here is the revenue side of that. So this is where the money is coming from to pay for those things. We have our state aid, and this is where we are receiving our foundation aid. So our foundation aid has been restored about 15 years ago. The state came up with a formula to establish that foundation aid, but never really implemented it and gave it to districts. So over the last three years, they've been putting it forward to the districts, giving it to -- back to help support, you know, local expenditures, as they should have been all along. And we've been using our reserves all along, rather than getting the aid that was due to us. So again, another reason why we are not going into our reserves to help balance our budget this year, because we've been, we've had that aid restored. So transfers in, again, there you see the 1.5 million for the roof, school taxes, then levied back to residents of the district. The tax cap is at 2.5%. We're levying them at 2.45 to meet our needs. So the tax levy will be 40.3 million. And again, the budget-to-budget reflects the 4.7, but the tax cap, or the tax levy that's being put into the revenues is 2.45%. This slide shows what, overall, on statewide average, what cost per student is. In Putnam Valley, you can see we're at about 25, 25.9, I'm sorry, 25,900, whereas the state's average is 23.4. And 23.468, though, represents all the way from, you know, upstate New York, as far as you can go, to downstate, all the way into the city. So this is a cost per student statewide average. We've come pretty close to that, considering we're in the lower Hudson Valley. I don't think that's doing too poorly. I think we're doing average. Our Brewster number here is also a year old because of, I guess, an information or a reporting issue that they had. So they're even higher, more than a year ago. So 26,000 per student. Garrison is rather, is coming in the highest for obvious reasons. And then you can see our surrounding districts, Lakeland, Haldane, Mayepec, and Carmel, similar. And here is the website down here. We can go to get all of that information. Sorry, it's popping up. I don't know why. So also, taken into consideration is looking at our taxes on an average home in Putnam Valley. Done the math for that, and looking around us in our surrounding school districts, the taxes on an average home, we're seeing that that is very much similar to what we pay in Putnam Valley. I know I've heard many people talk about how they think Putnam Valley, they live here, they're paying more than everybody else. How is that? Why is that? There's a lot of factors and information that you need to calculate a tax rate, but one of the main things to remember is that the state comes in and they evaluate the property based on an equalization basis, and so they make districts apply an equalization rate to their assessed values. And after doing that, it equals out what, you know, value is put on a home before you develop your tax rate. You can see it makes sense. You can see it makes sense. Lakeland, who has a slightly lower tax amount that they may pay because they have a lot of commercial property there. So a lot of that feeds into their assessed values and makes a difference in the long run. But the surrounding towns with similar, you know, residence and residential values and homes are similar to what we pay here in Putnam Valley. This is just a brief overview of what the tax rate has been over the last three years. And then just a reminder for some taxpayers that, again, the total tax is levied for a home is determined by the board to be the amount needed to meet the budgetary needs while remaining in the parameters of the tax cap. So that's always taken into consideration when we are levying our taxes is that we always want to stay below that cap, you know, but we, we do the best we can and that's the years we need to take from our reserves sometimes to make up the difference. But our goal is to stay within that cap, to be in a fiscally responsible and act in a fiscally responsible way. The taxable assessed value of every home is determined by the assessor or someone that, in our town, I think the assessor really farms that out, but they farm it out to a company that does this for a living. And they will reassess the homes every year. It's done every single year and residents have an opportunity before May 25th to challenge that assessment if they feel it's necessary, but the school does not put that assessed value on your home. And the rates, as far as determining the rates, I couldn't do that now. The taxable status date is July 1st. We find out what the total assessed values are, we find out what the equalizations rates are in July, and that's when we can tell you what the exact rate is. So right now, that would only be a guess based on a prior year. So that, those values are not known at this time. So again, our budgetary goals are to meet state and federal requirements, meet our students' needs academically and socially and emotionally, and maintain safety and security at all of our facilities. The budget that you're going to be voting on as a school district resident would, has three propositions this year. The first one being the budget itself, so the dollar figure, that, that 55 million, 55.5 million dollars. Proposition number two, there is going to be a Board of Education trustee seat open. And proposition number three, which I don't have a slide about, but I'm going to talk a few minutes about, is our, renewing our district's bus borrowing plan. So about five years ago, we did the same thing. We put a proposition on the ballot that just simply allows us to borrow money should we need to. It's more or less a technicality, we, to buy a bus and borrow to buy that bus, you have to have this proposition in place. If one of our buses were to break down and we had to buy it outright, that money would strictly have to come directly from our reserves because we don't have it planned for in a budget to spend $120,000 on a school bus that we may not need that year. What this allows us to do is borrow the money and pay it back over five years so that we have a more predictable expenditure within the budget to pay for that bus. At this time, we do not need any buses. We're not looking to buy any buses, but I, we, the last borrowing amount was 500,000 that we put on the proposition on the ballot, and that money's been exhausted all of about 50,000. So that won't get us another bus if we need one and we would have to buy it outright. So that's why we're asking just to renew the borrowing plan and to have that in place in case we need to do so. The last item that's going to be on the ballot proposition, I don't know if it's being called proposition number four or if it's a separate. It's a separate proposition for the town library budget, which again, I'll repeat what Dr. Left said earlier. The money, there is no money from the school budget that has anything to do with the library budget or a library budget that has to do with the school budget. There are two separate items and two separate budgets, and they will appear on the school tax bill as two separate lines. So we are merely the collecting agent for that money. We are not levying that money in our taxes. That money would be levied separately on the tax bill and then turned over to the library if the proposition were to pass. I just want to make it clear that those are two separate things because it is the first time that we would be putting this on the ballot and I want to make sure that there's no confusion with that. The vote is May 16th. And it'll be at the Putnam Valley Elementary School where it will be held between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And you can contact Maureen Bolino. She is our district clerk for absentee ballots. The dates of, to request those ballots are between April 17th and May 9th. And as long as they're received back to the district clerk on, by May 16th at 5:00 PM, they will be counted. And this is her contact information. This is also, this whole presentation is on our website. We also have a line-by-line budget presentation on our website of every single one of those larger numbers that you saw earlier broken down into smaller numbers. So you can see exactly what makes those, those up. I don't know if I missed anything from last time to this time that you want to talk about or bring out. We can talk about, also included in the budget is the pre-K funds. So the state has allotted universal pre-kindergarten for four-year-olds, dollars for the school district to spend to have a pre-K. And that money would, it's budgeted in the appropriations, but it's also budgeted in the revenues for the same exact amount. Because if we were able to find a community partner to help us with the pre-K and to run that pre-K for us, that money would be paid to them directly. If we don't find a partner to run that pre-K, that money does not come to the school district. In other words, it comes in the form of state aid, so we don't get the aid if we don't run the pre-K. Right now, that allotment per child is $5,400. And we are hopeful that we will find somebody to accommodate the program, but we have no clue at this time whether we will or not. We have an RFP out for those services. We've gotten a couple of requests, but no actual documentation in yet to, to see whether that was, it's due by March 31st. That has also, just as we described, the money that's brought in the reserves to pay for the roof repair, it has also inflated the budget for the pre-K. So we see $410,000 being put in the budget and in the revenue, which also inflates that. So that 4.7% number that we talked about earlier is also inflated by that on both sides of the equation. And depending on whether or not we run the program, we'll either have to give the money back. Well, we won't get it. We won't get it. It has to be applied for and we won't get it if we, if we don't run the program. So I want to make that clear as well. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, running through this so many times, I'm just.
On the pre-K, if we go through the bid process and nobody comes in to meet, it won't even make it to our adopted budget because it's, the deadline is, the deadline is before our adopted budget, so it won't show up at that point, correct?
So that would be a drop on the revenue side, I'm sorry, on the expense side as well as a corresponding drop on the revenue side?
Additionally, just, just for clarity's sake, we're unable to run a pre-K in-house for that same amount of money, which is the reason why we're going out for bids.
Correct.
And we're going out, and the reason why we can't is because it would cost us well more than the dollar amount allotted by the state.
Unfortunately, the state is allotting that same amount per student statewide. So all the way from Plattsburgh to Buffalo to New York, to the Bronx, you know, it's a down, it's not a downstate number, you know? And I want to say that, you know, I think that the intention of, you know, the state education department is that districts who want to run a pre-K program and can afford to run it will kick in some local dollars to do it. Right now, our budget doesn't allow for that. I don't, it's not something that would fit into our budget. It never has. It's never been, we've never been able to do that. I know at an advocacy meeting I was at over the last week, that was a, a big topic of conversation, recalculating that rate for a downstate. I don't know that that will ever happen. It's really geared more towards low and, you know, needy districts and that's what they're targeting.
Well, we, we have quite a few pre-K programs already established in the valley. I, I can think of three offhand where, you know, they're in use right now. So I don't, I don't think the state had its mindset on our area where they're pre-existing. I think what they wanted to see was more in those, as you say, the economically depressed areas that don't have existing pre-K that maybe the districts would come through.
Right, but you know, the fact that they're dangling out the money in front of us, but they're really not giving us, they're not really helping the situation by giving us an amount of money that may not be feasible, so.
Exactly.
Just some points on the pre-K piece. I know Barbara and myself have both spoke with state legislators about allowing for more local control over those funds. So they could set the funds, but allow us to negotiate the best deal possible for our students. And then currently, given the $5,400 allocation, we can service 76 students, which is great. But if we don't find a partner willing to do it for 5,400 students, we're servicing zero. Right? Maybe we can service 50 for that same amount of money and 50, I would argue, is better than zero. So that's one piece. The other piece is, is they're very strict in terms of it being an open lottery. I would love for that money to target students that are, four-year-olds that are not already in pre-K programs. That's obviously going to offer us the greatest return on our investment. If I'm simply, the alternative is if I'm simply poaching students from one community-run pre-K for another, now I run the risk of putting a local business out of business, which is certainly the last thing we want to do. So we're really tiptoeing down this line and trying to find a way where we can partner with our community organizations, make them stronger, better prepare students for school. But it's really tricky because it could go wrong in many different ways. The last thing I wanted to say something about was subsidizing it. The fear about subsidizing it, let's say that the district kicks in $1,000 for every pre-K student in order to run the program. But now next year, it's $2,000 per student and then it's $4,000 per student. And now the district is stuck in the position where either we abandon a program and cut services for students or just continuing to fund something that we really have no control over what the, what that necessary funding may be. So that's certainly the concern about subsidizing it is it may seem very fiscally responsible year one, but 10 years from now, you have no control over those costs. And at some point, you could be forced to eliminate a pre-K program that families are now counting on. So that's part of the fear. At least we know the $5,400 will be there every year and we can maintain a program moving forward.
Well, if the state were really serious about funding the pre-K programs, they would have made it geographically specific. And our costs are much, much higher than the costs up in Oneana, New York, that's for sure. You know, the, just look at their salary ranges and things like that from other districts.
Right, as far as I know, the only outlier from the 5,400 is New York City where they get a little over $10,000 per student, which makes sense.
Yeah.
The cost of the city versus the cost in Westchester and Putnam is certainly not half for us.
But again, I'm, I'm sure that they're going to struggle to run a program for $10,000. You know, it's going to be the same problem for them. Another thing I wanted to mention is, we're talking about all the state aid we're getting. None of this is real yet until April 1st, right? So we're expecting a budget to be adopted by the state on that date. Again, the meeting I was at in the, this last week, there were people on both sides saying, oh, they're never going to meet it. They're never going to meet the date. I don't know, those are press room people sometimes just saying those things.
They're not going to.
And then on the other hand, I had the state education department saying, we're very hopeful that they're going to meet that date, so don't worry. But, so you don't know sometimes what to listen to. Part of that conversation for foundation aid is that we were there to, as school business official group, to appeal to legislators, senators to say, you can't mandate any of that foundation aid for anything because that's not how the formula was developed. Yet they're talking about set-aside money for tutoring. And for us, like for our district, that set-aside amount is like $217,000 that they're telling us we have to spend on tutoring and not money that we've already spent on tutoring or we spend currently because we're addressing our students' needs now with tutoring. So they're saying you have to have new, new, spend it, decide something new that you're going to do for tutoring for $217,000 a year. It, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to, I, I think one district gave an example and they said they would have to spend 27 hours a day tutoring to spend all of the money that was being allotted. I mean, it's just not, so the school business officials were trying to appeal to them to say like, let us spend it the way that we need to spend it. You shouldn't be mandating money, which was never meant to be mandated in the first place. The formula never included any mandates. So here we are getting the money reinstated, but yet they might be putting some restrictions on that that we really don't help us and we won't get that portion of it if they do.
I, I want to mention again that I still feel very strongly we should go to cap. And again, the reason why I'm pushing this issue, and that's to my fellow board members, if, we would lose $20,000 this year by not going to cap. The state looks at what we spend, what we raise, and they're going to look at our budget and say, well, it was $20,000 they never spent. We, we will reduce their cap the following year because they didn't use $20,000. Now next year, the cap comes in $20,000 less. That's $40,000 that the district could have held on to by going to full cap. And, and again, I stress the fact that the cap has hurt this district year after year after year. And we have milked our reserves to where, you know, they're much lower than, than they were. And thank God we have great financial people. Joe, you're, you're very good with that, that we're able to sustain it. But that extra revenue, it's not a lot, it's 20,000, could be put aside in that reserve so that future times, if we need to pull the reserves, we have that little bit of additional funds available. I, I think we have lived by the cap, will die by the cap. We need to utilize the cap, both pro and con. It has hurt us in the past, it could benefit us this year. I really ask the board to consider going to full cap. I think the people will understand, we don't want to lose the 20,000 this year, we don't want to lose it next year as well. That adds up. We, we have needs in the district, even if it's to sustain the little bit of reserves that we have for, for tough times to come. I really think we should go full cap and, and I, I hope the board considers that. And we're going to have to move quick because, you know, we would need to change a little bit of the presentation, say we're going to cap.
Yeah, I mean, we would need, I would need direction in making that change as, I think April 13th is our next meeting. It's a night that we hope to adopt the budget. So some time to think between now and then on that topic or, you know, at any point, we can have a discussion about that now. It's, there's nothing really to discuss other than the fact that we've been able to stay under it based on what the information is that I gave you. I do agree with your sentiment. I would never go any, I wouldn't recommend going lower, that's for sure. What I would say is that we're not, we're uncertain of the aid. We're never, like until the last day when we're told what it's going to be.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know.
So going to cap would help us.
Right. There are, there are factors that are not allowing us to, you know, get, receive revenue that, you know, from other sources. And our expenditures, obviously, we, we try to do the best at estimating them. Expenses that we can put into the calculation of the cap don't include any of the things that we have in the budget other than our debt expense. We don't have the option of adding in anything else that's going up due to inflation. So our inflation factor that's factored into the tax cap is 2% and inflation has been between 6% and 8% over the last year.
For instance, you know, tonight we're going to approve.
It's a valid point.
uh, you know, the, the trip that the, the youngsters are taking to, to play basketball. That wasn't in our budget. So where does that money come from? It comes from the reserves. If you have that twenty thousand dollars, it's there for those things. And this occurs quite a bit. There, there are special occasions that the district really needs to support. And if you don't have the money, you can't support it. So what I'm saying is, the state is allowing us to go to full cap. Let's go to full cap and have that money, you know, there in the reserves. So then, when a, a special thing like an overnight trip comes up, where, you know, the kids are going for state champion, I mean, that's outstanding. We, we want to be able to afford those things. And again, it, it's, you know, uh, twenty thousand dollars, uh, but it, it will double next year to forty, you know, the twenty this year that we lost, and twenty that the state will say you didn't need it. So your, your cap is going to be a little bit li, lower, because that's how they set that cap. They look at what you spent and, and what your budget came in at. And, uh, I, I, I think we, we should. The, the cap has hurt us, let's use it to help us now. And I'm appealing to my fellow board members on that. Uh, I, I, I believe the public will understand it. As a matter of fact, the public will probably approve it because it actually gains us revenue that, um, we might need in the future.
No, my comment would be, um, when I left here, the last meeting was, we should only ask the taxpayers for what we need. Um, but I do believe you make some good points tonight.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, I, I totally appreciate the sentiment. I do have a problem with the idea of, we have a budget that's designed on the program that's been proposed.
But there's some unknowns, Joe, and that's the problem.
Well, I know, there's always unknowns, but also in the budgeting already, there's unknowns that are built into the budget.
Yeah.
Um, so my, my, you know, my concern is like, okay, where do we inflate twenty thousand dollars? You can't, I don't, we can't, you know, put a budget vote out for, to add to a contingency. That's not what, you know, we don't, you know, have a budget that's, that's like, okay, we're going to budget and twenty thousand goes to reserves. The idea would be, you'd have to find a program, and it's, again, won't be hard. You can, you know, that could easily be not by all kinds of different things.
I was going to say, with the board's permission, Jill and I could pretty quickly come up with exactly how.
I can tell you right now.
All that money will be spent.
Put it to theater, put it to theater. I mean, you saw The Lion King. Can you imagine if those kids had an additional five thousand dollars to work with? The costumes they would have produced?
Believe me, there are many areas of the budget during the school year where I have visitors coming into my office and.
You have to take from Peter to give to Paul.
Bring me a cup of coffee or something, saying, let, let me talk to you about something, you know? So, I mean, it's not, you know, look it, the money can be put in there. It doesn't have to be spent just because it's put in there. Um, but what it does allow us to do is start off with a, um, a tax levy calculation next year that doesn't create a loss for us, right? So what it does is maybe, just as Mr. Alavero said, I mean, there's reserves that, you know, every year, we, we, we don't plan a budget with nothing left over. That would be silly, and it would be irresponsible, right? So although I think it's not a big chunk of money, I, I did just go to where we needed to go to, and that's what it is. But it, it's true that we will lose double that amount each year going forward because that's what happens. We've had this conversation before. We know what, how the calculation is done, and, um, that's what would happen as a result.
Just a little insight on this process. After we're done meeting with the department coordinators and all the building principals and start to build our original budget, there comes a time where Jill and I lock ourselves in the conference room for five, six hours and go line by line through the budget to figure out what of those requests can we fund? And why, well, it's a very valuable process. I can promise you, the numbers rarely ever go up, right? So as we go through that line-by-line budget, Jill and I are there sort of slashing this, slashing this, slashing this, this has to be lowered. So I don't want people to think, like, this is our wish list budget, and we couldn't possibly ask for anything more. This is where we were, thought we were able to get to, while able to sustain programs, um, recognizing the economic needs of the community. But to put twenty thousand dollars back in, there's probably fifty places we took twenty thousand dollars out of. Um, so that certainly wouldn't be, uh, a burden for us. I just want to understand the process is, it's not anything you want, you get. Everyone has an opportunity to ask for what they want, but ultimately, those, that time we spend going line by line always results in a decrease in, in what's budgeted for.
And I can tell you, since we met with every department, we've heard, you know, we've already gotten, like, requests, like, oh, I put this much in the budget. Do you think I can put a little more? I said, no, I already set the budget. You're going to have to deal with whatever we put in there, and maybe if there comes an opportunity during the year, next year, and, and we can do that, we will, but I can't promise you that. So, you know, there's always, there's always things that have already been approached, and, and, and we never know where expenditures are going to go with students and things like that, so.
See, my biggest concern is the loss of revenue for next year as well. That, that just haunts me, that we know the state will give us less because we're using less. And that, that tax cap for every year, I, I know, and I've been following the district, you know, we, we have bent to it and, and been battered by it. And now, the first time, and I think since the cap was established, we have the opportunity to actually use it in our favor. Not for a lot of money, not for frivolous things, but for, uh, good financial fiscal planning. You know, twenty thousand this year, and then next year, the state says, oh, okay, let's keep them up at that level, and that's an additional next year. So that, that's why I'm pushing this.
So may I suggest, if it's the will, or at least a consideration of the board, what Jill and I can do is, we can sit down before the April thirteenth meeting, and we could come up with some scenarios as to what that twenty thousand dollars could be used to fund. So we don't have to put the money in the budget, but if the board wants to see, um, how that money's, how those monies may be utilized, if they are added to the budget, we can certainly share some of that information during the next meeting before we adopt the proposed budget.
And we'll know what the RFP situation is for the pre-K. We'll know what the state aid is, if they've adopted it or not. Um, so there's time between now and then to, uh, make changes, if necessary. Um, we are having that other budget meeting on Wednesday, um, April nineteenth, at the elementary school at six-thirty. Um, and that is the PTA meeting. That is the PTA meeting that we're having, but everybody is welcome, um, to come. That is not really a budget discussion as far as making changes because by then, we hope to have it to.
Right.
But I, I would really like to invite the public and anybody who wants to have further budget discussions to find out more about what goes into it, or what they, whatever they want to know about the budget to come that evening.
I, I like that idea, Dr. Love. I'd, I'd appreciate if you would do that, that would be great, thank you.
And I, I don't want it to sound frivolous, but, I mean, over the, over a fifty-million-dollar budget, twenty thousand dollars is not even a rounding error.
I, I know that.
You know, but I, but at the same time, I want to respect the voters in that just because we can go to a certain amount, that we automatically go to a certain.
And, Joe, I, I agree with you. If it weren't for the case that the state is also part of this, and they're watching what we're going to spend, uh, I, I would say, yeah, let, let's keep it where it is. But because the state will look at, uh, our, our financial situation when they set next year's, uh, the tax cap, we want to be in the best position possible to get, you know, as much as that revenue from the state as we can, and that's why I advocate for it. And, uh, believe me, um, it, it, I know we will be able to find uses for that, that twenty thousand dollars without a doubt. I mean, today, to rent a bus, to send kids up to Albany, to, or, or Glenn Falls to participate in the state champions, uh, you know, basketball, what have you.
Well, they'll think of half of that money.
You're not kidding, that's what I'm saying. And, and yet, we would have to pull it out of the reserves, you know? So there's always special occasion.
And ultimately, twenty thousand dollars over the, over eleven thousand or five thousand households, you know, it is not.
It's negligible.
It's negligible.
But it, you know, it, I mean, I don't want to say it's symbolic because it's kind of.
It, it is symbolic, and, and you're right about that. Uh, that is what it is, to say you came under the cap, but.
Because I do think of, of certain voices out in the community that, and I, not, not to pander at any single person or group, but then, you know, the idea of, uh, they're just going after all the money they can get. Um, I, I, you know, I totally, I get it from both sides as far as point of view and.
Well, there's lots of ways to think about it, um, and there's lots of time to still think about it. But, um, another way to think about it is, when we put any leftover funds into our reserves, it helps us reduce maybe debt payments and interest payments that we have in the future. So while you think we might be taking it in as extra money now, it is reducing something that we will have to do later on.
And the financial ratings are enhanced too. You know, when the state comes down, does their audit, looks at us, that these guys are in pretty good shape, you know, and that's where we want to be.
And we're still limited to four percent anyway, so.
Currently, yes, we're also fighting that.
Right.
Well, yeah, that'll be a fight, I think, for a while.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to talk about policy sixty-four-hundred. It's our second reading, um, of the payroll procedures. Did anybody have any questions about the policy? No?
That just essentially changes the title of Who Can Do This?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was a matter of changing, sorry. It was a matter of changing the title, uh, from treasurer to director of business, and then the alternate person being the treasurer, um, of the district, who is now a different person than myself in the business office, and that enables us both to sign off on, and do a payroll certification every time we do a payroll. That's all.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move to new business. Item one, please.
Resolved on recommendation superintendent schools to appoint Nicholas Singer to a long-term substitute teaching position as a physical education teacher at the elementary school effective March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of a hundred-and-fifty dollars per day. Mr. Singer, whole physical education, seven through twelve, initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Oh, Sam. Wow. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, as follows. Section one, the proposition herein after set forth is hereby authorized to be submitted for the approval of the qualified voters at the annual school district election to be held in said school district on the sixteenth day of May, twenty-twenty-three. Section two, the school district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include as a part of the notice of the annual district meeting and election notice with reference to the submission of said proposition in substantially the following form. Notice is hereby further given that at said annual election to be held on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the following proposition will be submitted. Proposition, school buses, shall the following resolution be adopted? To wit, resolve that the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, is hereby authorized to pay the cost of the purchase of school buses, including incidental equipment and expenses in connection therewith, at a maximum estimated cost of five-hundred-thousand dollars. And said amount, or so much thereof, as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of a tax upon the taxable property of said school district and collected in annual installments as provided by section four-sixteen of the education law. And in anticipation of such tax, obligations of said school district shall be issued. The school district has determined this to be a type-two action pursuant to the regulations of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I'm sorry, the, uh, the implementation of which, as proposed, the regulations provide, will not result in any significant adverse environmental effect.
I second.
On and on.
I'm so sorry, I'm laughing.
Questions or comments?
I just want to summarize, it's essentially a, a line of credit if we need to purchase buses.
Right.
If we don't need to purchase buses, none of that money will ever be accessed. If we do, some of that money will be accessed.
It's there.
But ultimately, that's what it is. It's a lot of words to say that we're authorizing the district to have a line of credit available for the purchase of transportation vehicles.
And we're okay under the EPA and the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Promulgated pursuant, yes, my favorite word. Sweet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This probably, this requires a road call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, this requires a road call vote. Mr. Ferraro.
Aye.
Mr. Alavero. Mrs. Horvitz.
Aye.
Ms. Yeder.
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Mrs. Bolino. You told me and I forgot. Numbers.
It's understandable.
I'm glad I, I'm glad I could provide entertainment for all of you.
Resolved to approve the notice of public budget hearing, budget vote, other propositions, and trustee election for the Putnam Valley Central School District as per document one-fifty-six slash twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the previously approved retirement date for Eva Wayne to the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, as per her letter references document number one-fifty-seven dash twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the second reading of revisions to policy sixty-four-hundred payroll procedures as per document number one-sixty-twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I would now like to open it up for public comment on any topic.
We have the library of representatives here. Perhaps they, they may wish to, uh, make.
We do appreciate the library coming out to all of our meetings to answer questions as we change the way we, you know, are going to do things in Putnam Valley.
Thank you. After a long career in broadcasting, I never walk in front of cameras. That's why it was a long way around. So anyway, uh, just to announce, we're going to start, we're, we're meeting, we have our board meeting on.
Would you tell us, we know who you are, but would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course, I'm Terri Raskin. I am the president of the Board of Trustees for the library, and I've got two other trustees with me tonight. Uh, we are going to be meeting, our regularly scheduled board meeting is this coming Monday at seven. It is open to the public. We welcome people to come, see how we operate, ask questions. And at that time, we're also going to be putting together a schedule of informational programs. I'll talk briefly about what the information is, but, uh, keep an eye out on our website, on Facebook, on other places, for, we're going to do a series of in-person meetings, and also a number of Zoom meetings. So we should be able to accommodate anyone who's interested in coming and asking questions and finding out about what the proposition is all about. Ample, ample, uh, opportunity. Uh, the state education law provides that libraries, association libraries, of which we are one, may petition the voters, which we already have, and get on the school district ballot. And as everyone has, has mentioned, we, uh, this is just to ask the school district to be the, the, the people who levy for us taxes that we need. Currently, we are funded in part, in, actually, most of our, uh, most of our funding comes from a contract with the town. Uh, that's, uh, just over three-hundred-forty-seven-thousand dollars. That is voted in not by the public, not by the taxpayers, not by the voters, but by the, uh, the five members of the town board. Uh, as few as, the majority is three. So as few as three people can determine what that contract is. Over the last number of years, it's either been level or a couple of percentages up, you know, a couple to one or two percent. Uh, one, a couple of years ago, we had a miraculous five percent increase. But since then, it's. But since then, it's really remained the same. Inflation has been much higher than that. So we're falling behind year after year after year. Our needs are many. We've got huge infrastructural problems. If you drove by the library today or yesterday, you saw that, that storm that we had this weekend knocked down trees that fell directly across the waterway and crushed our guardrail. That is the safety guardrail that keeps people from falling into the creek, which is a good thing. And so we've closed, we've closed off a part of the parking lot. We have to repair that. Not all of it is going to be covered by insurance. And, you know, these are the kinds of expenses that come up just, you know, because it's a snowy Sunday. We have, if you've been in the library recently, you've seen the skylight that no longer lets in any light. It is years past the time we should have replaced it. We haven't had the money to do it. It's going to cost quite a couple hundred thousand dollars to repair that and our roof. We have other infrastructural problems, which include a huge issue that we are not ADA compliant. This is, among other things, not just a matter of ramps in and out of the doorways, but regrading the entire parking lot. That's something we cannot afford to do. And over the last several years, we've replaced both bridges. We closed the library for a considerable period of time after Sandy and the other hurricanes because part of our upstairs, the children's room or the children's area, there was a crack in the wall and we put, had engineers put a meter on it and it just kept expanding. Frightening, but we did it. And construction grants pay for maybe a quarter of this, if at all. We have to come up with the rest of the money. So that is, you know, that is just infrastructure. We, we need the increase that we're asking for because we need to not only shore up the building and make it workable for the future as well, but to go back and increase the services that we will provide to the community. We, once upon a time, we were open a couple of evenings a week and even Sundays. We'd like to restore those hours. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to if we get this budget approved by the voters. We are, we will expand our programs. We already have just a wealth of things that we provide for the community. We're doing it on a shoestring. Everything from all the books, the eBooks, the music programs, museum passes, notary services, everything you can think of. It is, I'd like to say that the library is a center for the community. I really believe it is, and it's, it's such a necessity. I mean, we have the shared vision of providing education, information, entertainment for our town, and that is what we want to continue to do. Remember that a town that has a decent library sees that property values increase. And for that, it's going to cost a little money, absolutely. The, we figure, and we have, we're going to be posting these charts on the internet and on our website. The average four hundred thousand dollar home will be levied and it, as, you know, people are paying for the library anyway through town taxes. This will be split off separately. You'll be able to see exactly what it is. But the average four hundred thousand dollar home will be levied in addition, under a additional fifty dollars per year per household. We hope that voters believe that this is something that they can well afford so that we can continue for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Okay.
Okay, upcoming meeting topics.
So our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April thirteenth. It'll again be a budget presentation and hopefully a budget adoption. After that, we had mentioned already, April nineteenth is the PTA Budget One-O-One session held at Putnam Valley Elementary School at six thirty. The following two meetings are Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, May second. And for those meetings, we'll get back to our presentations to the board. I know we have a couple still out there hanging in the wings that we want to get. Now, we have a data presentation is one that we're working on and others. So those, those will start again as soon as the budget process is complete.
And April nineteenth is the PTA meeting at the elementary school?
Six thirty, elementary school.
Six thirty.
In the auditorium or cafeteria, where would that be?
I'm assuming it's in the auditorium, but we can certainly confirm. I'm sure more information will be coming out from the PTA.
Last year was in the teacher's lounge.
What's that?
Last year was in the teacher's lounge, so I'm not quite sure.
Oh, the staff room?
I think that was our budget Q and A. This is, I think, a whole.
I promise if you come to the building, we'll direct you to the right place to go.
Thank you, Jill.
We'll get one of those glow.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll just stand there and do that.
You could do that, okay. Okay, board member comments? Anybody?
Oh, I just want to say, I saw The Lion King and, you know, Barbara, you were there and Janette. It was so awesome. I mean, I was, there were parts that were, I mean, actually poignant. You have almost hearsay. It was an incredible production by these young people. I really was so impressed.
The actors and actresses, the singers, the musicians, the crew, the, you know, and they, and it was all student-driven. It was really very well done, yeah.
It was.
The science fair, I agree with Dr. Luft, is kind of like a highlight. I'll be anxious, I think, what is, what did we say, April?
Thirteenth, next meeting.
Thirteenth, at the next meeting? So we haven't decided on a time. It'll be before the meeting. Mrs. Ross, like, how long do you think it would take us to see ten? Half an hour? Is that enough time or not enough time? Okay, because I.
Sounds like that's.
I was pressing for more time. I want to make sure I hit each one this time. They did such a great job. It was, it was a lot of fun to participate, so thank you.
So, yeah, I went to some of the Seal of Biliteracy's. They were amazing. This year, they did ask because I was the only, sometimes I was the only one in the audience, Sam and I, could, even if you just have to present in Spanish, could you summarize it in English so that the audience who doesn't speak Spanish has some idea of what you're talking about? It was certainly easier than the ones in Chinese and, you know, they're very difficult. But, and I didn't get to any of the French ones today, were, were too French, but I, I was taking a law course. I would have rather listened to them in French. But it was really good. And I know the Cass Presentations, Creativity, Activity, and Service are coming up. This Monday and then the next Monday and then April seventeenth. So they are amazing too when you.
Yeah.
Every time I listen to what the students are doing, especially their activity and service and the creativity, but I think of what I was doing in high school, it was nothing like what these students are doing.
That's what I thought about the science fair.
Boy, that is the truth.
It is really amazing. I know that the elementary play is coming up. I didn't write the date down, but I know it's next week, I think.
Twenty-third.
They're doing Annie. It's always amazing. And I always say I'm going to remember who was in the play so that I can track them in middle school and high school, but they changed so much from elementary to middle to high school that it's kind of hard to do. So, yeah, it was, it was a good week. It was a lot of really good stuff happening. And we're crossing our fingers for the girls' basketball team. Okay.
It's likely our last snow day?
I hope so.
I think so.
So.
Now we've got mud days, guys.
Right. The dress rehearsal for the elementary school play is four thirty on the twenty-third, and then the performance is on Friday, the twenty-fourth, seven P M.
Good.
And they also use like two act, they're very, Mrs. Calhoun and Mrs. Phillips do an amazing job with the students. Okay.
Speaking of snow days, we've used two. How many do we have a lot of? So what will happen if we don't use anymore?
So if we lose two, that's, there's no more days that are given back. So we've exhausted those give back days that would have been scheduled around Memorial Day, but we still have another four days built into our schedule if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, they got, at least they got a snow day. It always thrills students to get a snow day.
I blew, I blew a shear pin on my snow blower, so I can't.
No more snow. Okay.
That snow was heavy.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night and be safe.
And happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody, tomorrow.